Condominium Unit 5.
The, excuse me. The, that's a bad time, lose your voice. The development of the property, is that considered a mixed-use development containing both residential and non-residential uses on the same tract of land and plan as a cohesive unit?
Yes.
Is the property located primarily in the township's highway commercial district?
Yes, it is.
It is a portion located in the neighborhood commercial district?
Yes.
Are additional, oh, thank you very much. Are additional signs and modifications to the sign standards of Article 18 permitted by conditional use approval as part of a master sign plan?
Yes, they are.
And have you requested approval by conditional use of a master sign plan for the Mills of Shepherdstown Crossing?
Yes, we have.
And does that application include all of the required information and address all of the applicable requirements set forth in Article 18 of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it does.
What I'd like to do is present you with exhibits and walk through each of the proposed signs. Our first exhibit is Exhibit A1. Is that the sign matrix that was submitted with the application?
Yes, it is, Exhibit A1.
And does that exhibit discuss the proposed general site signage, the proposed signs for the mixed-use buildings, the existing and proposed signs for Chick-fil-A, as well as the proposed signs for Chipotle?
Yes, it does.
Showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A2, is that the site plan that was submitted with the application?
Yes, it is, A2.
And does that site plan identify the proposed locations of signs A through E?
Yes, it does.
Showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A3, is this a revised version of the site plan?
Yes, it is, Exhibit A3.
And if you could just explain for us the revisions that were made to the site plan as reflected on Exhibit A3?
Yeah, so the changes were rather minor. Sign A, which is located adjacent to the main entrance into the site, it was shifted back away from Gettysburg Pike about five feet, so now it sits about 15 feet back. And then Sign C, which was the pylon sign back by the PennDOT right-of-way, that was shifted slightly closer to the PennDOT right-of-way.
And then where there are some sign labels for the mixed-use buildings and the existing Chick-fil-A pylon sign that were removed?
Yes, yes. Exhibit A2 has the mixed-use signs on Buildings 1 and 2, and then the existing Chick-fil-A pylon sign.
Okay. Let's first talk about the main entrance sign, which is Sign A. Is that sign proposed to be located at the main entrance to the development from Gettysburg Pike?
Yes, it is.
I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A4. Is that the plan that identifies the main entrance sign?
Yes, it is.
And then I've also handed you applicant's Exhibit A5. Is that the revised Exhibit A that is being submitted tonight?
Yes, it is.
And if you could explain for us the differences or revisions that were made to Exhibit A as reflected on Exhibit A5?
Sure. So on Exhibit A4, you'll notice in the upper right corner, Sign A is positioned about 10 feet back from the Gettysburg right-of-way. And then on Exhibit A5, in that same upper right corner, the sign is shown 15 feet back.
And does revised Exhibit A also include sign illumination details for Sign A?
Yes, on Exhibit A5, on Page 2, there are sign illumination calculations.
So now that we've gone over the revisions, let's talk about the proposed main entrance sign, Sign A. Describe for us what is proposed for that sign.
So what we're proposing is a sign that has about 13 different individual sign panels for 13 different tenants. And the reason why it's like that is we have potentially six tenants in each of the two mixed-use buildings, plus we have Chick-fil-A, plus we have Chipotle. So there could possibly be 14 different tenants. We're kind of making the assumption that maybe one or two of the tenants in the mixed-use buildings might be slightly larger, therefore we might perhaps might need, you know, one or two fewer, but we kind of err on the side of caution and made the sign big enough.
And the sign itself, if you could describe the materials that are proposed for the construction of the sign?
Sure, the sign will have a brick base. We're hoping to match the brick of the mixed-use buildings. There are street numbers on there to allow the fire department to see what addresses are located on the site. The sign will be internally lit. Their individual, as I mentioned before, the individual sign panels for all the various tenants on the site.
Is the proposed main entrance sign, Sign A, permitted without the approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, it is.
What is the proposed height of the main entrance sign?
The sign is 19 feet high.
Is the proposed height of the main entrance sign permitted without the approval of the master sign plan?
No, I believe the ordinance only allows 10 feet.
Okay. What is the proposed area of the main entrance sign?
It is 100 square feet.
Is the proposed area of the main entrance sign permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
No, the maximum is 50 square feet.
So the freestanding sign is allowed, but the proposed sign is requesting relief for both the sign height and the sign area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's move to Sign B.
Mr. Strom or Mr. Martin, are we allowed to ask questions? Like, I had a question about Sign A, and I don't know if it's more efficient to ask it now or when you want?
I'll defer to the board if you want to do each sign as we go. It might be if it's?
Just it's more of a nature of a question.
I think it's appropriate if it's for clarification or a follow-up, yeah.
Yeah, the question was like, how large are those panels? Like, for panel number one, how many square feet would that panel be? And then you have the smaller panels.
The, each panel appears to be about 18 inches high and would be about, about, well, I should say the three large ones at the top, those are eight feet wide, and then the ones further down are not as tall. They appear to be about 16 inches and are each about four feet wide.
The large panels, if it's, you say, one and a half, 18 inches high? Eight feet, would that be 12 square feet?
Well, excuse me. We really need to come so that we can get the?
Would it be, panel number one be 12 square feet? Am I doing the math right? Yeah, so eight, eight feet.
The gentleman from the sign company introduced himself so that we can get the stenographer can get the testimony. Could you come up and introduce yourself so that our stenographer can get your answer?
Should be sworn in, I guess, to approve.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. My name's Ray Wanger, E-N-G-E-O.
You're employed by?
WJ Stricker Sign Company.
Speak into the microphone, please, yeah.
All right, I think the question was, what's the size of those tenant panels? You know, I don't have a scale rule here, and I can't get it to you exact, but the best thing I can do is right now just divide it out right now with a calculator really quick, so. We're about, average about 10 inches, about 10 and a half inches tall, the sign, actual sign's face, but then you see the physical divider bars in there, that takes about an inch and a half away from the face. So there, we'll say on average the face is maybe eight inches tall, the smaller one, a visual opening.
Can you convert it to square feet?
Sorry.
Can you convert it to square feet?
Yeah, so 32 square feet, maybe. Times four, or, let's see, eight, I'm sorry, it's not eight times. 2.6 square feet of sign face area for the smaller tenants.
Larger tenants is what?
Well, six and a half square feet.
A little under eight feet, or, okay, six something, okay.
Six and a half square feet.
I was, I was coming up with like seven, but I mean, take your math over mine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's take a look at Sign B. I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A6. Is that exhibit depicting the proposed monument sign that would be located at the right-in, right-out entrance to the development?
That's correct.
And I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A7. Is that the revised Exhibit B?
That is.
And if you could explain for us what, if any, revisions were made to Exhibit B as reflected on the revised Exhibit B?
Sure, yeah, the changes were very minor on A7, in the upper right corner in that, in that panel. The letter B was added after the word "sign." And then if you look at the bottom, the dates that the signs were revised, that was changed. So again, very, very minor.
So if you could refer to Exhibit A7 and describe the proposed monument sign to us?
Sure, again, similar to the first sign, we're proposing a brick base that would match the brick of the mixed-use buildings. The overall sign cabinet would be similar in design, color, style, as the first sign we discussed, Sign A. And the overall sign would be about seven feet high. And this, this sign would not be illuminated, and the back of the sign would be, would be blank because you, you can't turn left into the site if you're going south on Gettysburg Pike. So that, that side is blank. And then the side facing south would have the potential for four, four tenants.
Okay. And is that proposed monument sign permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, it is.
And you mentioned that the proposed height of that sign is seven feet. That height is permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, it is. The sign could be 10 feet.
And what is the proposed area of the monument sign?
The area is 37 and a half feet.
And is the proposed area of the monument sign permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, it could be up to 50 square feet.
Okay. Turn our attention to Sign C. Showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A8. Does that sign, or does that exhibit depict the proposed pylon sign, Sign C?
Yes, it does.
I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A9. Is that the revised pylon sign exhibit?
Yes, it is.
And again, if you could explain the revisions that were made from the exhibit that was submitted with the application to Exhibit A9?
Sure. On A9, the location of the, of the sign was shifted slightly towards the PennDOT right-of-way. So if you're on Page 2, the panel on the left side, it shows the Sign C as a little red triangle. It's closer, or, you know, it's 15 feet from the PennDOT right-of-way. And then on the third page, there are light illumination calculations.
And so as we've done with the other signs, if you could refer to Exhibit A9 and describe for us the proposed pylon sign?
So generally, the cabinet of this sign will be similar in color to the other two signs. It'll have space for three tenants. We will pick the three main tenants to be on this sign. It will be internally illuminated. And I believe that's it.
Okay, and the?
I did have a question about this one, too. Mainly this, the area of the panel. And like I see in the upper left, there's like a two-foot dimension reference, but yet the height of the panel is more than two feet. Certainly appears the panel is 15 feet wide.
So it's probably more like three foot, three inches tall, the panel height. The two foot, I'm just doing a representation of the size of the character that I'm representing on, the word "tenant."
Oh, the tenant.
Yeah, just the word, name, two foot. And that really has to do with site visibility and distances readability and stuff like that of a character height of that size.
So if it's closer to three feet and then 15 feet wide, it's 45 square feet sign area just for that particular tenant?
Yeah.
Okay. Am I correct in assuming it's going to say like Chick-fil-A or Chipotle, or maybe one of the other tenants in the mills as the three lead?
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have a, our last exhibit may be helpful. What we did was we took the main entrance sign, the monument sign, and the pylon sign, and added the Chick-fil-A and Chipotle signage to the panels, so you can see what that looks like. So obviously, that's the main entrance sign, the first page, and then Mike, if we could go to the second page. That's the monument sign at the right-in, right-out. So again, the sign face that would be visible would be if you're driving northbound on Gettysburg Pike, the opposite side of the monument sign would remain blank. And then the third page. That's the pylon sign with the Chick-fil-A and Chipotle sign panels. So we just thought that would be helpful so you could, since we know those two tenants to have those on there just for a visual representation.
So I have a question on this, actually, two questions. Your, your exhibits, the initial exhibit showed, I think that this was within a 10-foot setback, and now you're moving it back outside of that setback, is that correct? You're moving it back to 15 feet?
You're referencing Sign C?
Yeah, that sign right there, the pylon sign.
I believe that's correct, yep.
And in the description on your matrix, your sign matrix, I just want to make sure, I think you're stipulating that the tenant name may change, but you're not going to change the number of tenants listed on the sign? Or are you, are you reserving that right? In other words, could that sign suddenly turn into five or seven smaller tenants?
No, I believe based on, based on what Ray Wanger is, or will say, the, they need to be that size in order for them to be visible from Route 15.
Understand.
So I don't think there would ever be more than three.
Your, your description says individual tenant names and sign spaces for three tenants' names may change due to tenant's suite size and name logo sizes. So I just want to make sure I'm fine with changing tenants. I'm not fine approving a sign that maybe changes content, and maybe you have six places up there all of a sudden.
There will, there will be three. I think what I was, what I was thinking is because of the, the shape of the logo and name, like Chipotle as a name is narrower, is thinner, so their sign could maybe be an inch or two smaller. Chick-fil-A's is, has taller letters.
I just want to make sure we're limiting it?
Something like that.
To three locations.
Yes.
There will not be more than three locations on that sign.
So Mr. Gates, you're giving testimony that you will have no more than three tenants signs or tenant names on that sign?
Correct.
Okay, conversely, what if you ended up with one, and then you have one large, large sign for a single tenant? Is that a possibility?
Not likely, since we, since two of the tenants are already known, Chick-fil-A and Chipotle.
But I have a similar concern to Commissioner Cochran. You don't, we don't perhaps want five or six or eight names on there, but if you had a single name, that seems to be a little bit outside the intent, but perhaps not. I said, that could be, if it's allowed, I would defer to the zoning officer.
Can I just ask, Steve, you can always put that, this is a conditional use hearing, so you can put that as conditions on each sign that that one has to have three. We can list it as a condition if you, if you, you know, if the board feels that way.
Three equal-sized panels, well, relatively equal-sized.
Relatively, I hear your concerns, but, yeah.
Yep, and we have a third tenant that's 80% certain, so.
Would you object to that condition if we include that?
No, I think that's very fair.
Good, thanks, Rick. Continue.
Just want to talk about the dimensions of the proposed pylon sign. What is the height of the proposed pylon sign?
It is 25 feet.
And is the proposed height of the pylon sign permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes.
And what is the area of the proposed pylon sign?
It is 150 square feet.
And is the proposed area of the pylon sign permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes.
Let's talk about our proposed directional sign.
Before that, if I may, I may have missed, what is the material of the pylon sign itself? Not, not the sign, but the, the vertical poles?
The structure itself is going to steel pipe, that'll be steel, a steel structure inside those brown uprights, but then there are going to be aluminum pole covers that's going to be going around them.
I, my only comment, and again, I don't know that that's preference, I would like to not have a rusty steel sign out.
That's why we do pole covers.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A10. Is that the proposed directional sign, Sign D?
Yes, it is.
And I'm also showing you applicant's Exhibit A11. Is that a revised plan for Sign D?
Yes, it is.
And if you could, again, explain the revisions that were made to Sign D from the original application to what is depicted on applicant's Exhibit A11?
Sure. The only change was on A11, we added the sign illumination calculations on Page 2.
Now, if you could refer to applicant's Exhibit A11 and describe for us the proposed directional sign and why you're proposing it?
Yes, so the, the sign will be, it will be simply to provide direction to tenants that are already on the site, so they know where to go to get the Daybreak Church or the Dog Park. We, you know, the road comes, you know, we call it Lindlow Boulevard, but it comes in off of Gettysburg Pike. You crest the hill, some people may not realize that they are able to go down that new road to get to either Daybreak or the Dog Park. So we thought, rather than people being confused when they're on the site, that they would be able to see it and know which direction to go. Also, tenants that are in the residential may not be aware that there's a Dog Park, you know, at the end of the road, so those who are walking on the, on the path, on the trail, will, will know where to, where to go.
And will this be a single-sided sign?
Yes, it will be.
And you have two different versions of Sign D on Exhibit A11. Why are there two different versions?
There's two different versions because the sign is going to sit about eight or 10 feet, what would that be, east of where there's an electric transformer. There's a high-powered, high-voltage line that comes out the back of that unit and kind of follows, parallels the sidewalk. So I'm not quite sure where that power line is, but it's encased in concrete. So we might have to have the, the two-legged version of the sign in order to straddle that, that electric line that's underground.
So the preference would be the, the sign that has the brick base, but the, the alternative version recognizes that, that underground power line?
Correct.
The sign, given where it's located, do you anticipate it would be legible to anyone off of the property?
No, I've driven by the property on Gettysburg Pike, and with the sign being, you know, clear to the back, almost kind of cresting the hill, it's, it's so far back that you really wouldn't be able to see it from Gettysburg Pike. So it, it would only be for those people who are on, already on the property.
Is the proposed directional sign permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
No, it's not.
And that would include both the, the height of the proposed sign and the area?
Correct.
And as an aside, obviously, the master sign plan is to include all of the proposed signage for the development. When we were meeting with Jen and Mike to talk about the overall sign package, we talked about the directional sign. So from our point of view, it merely is intended as a directional sign, it's not advertising anything on the, that's associated with the development, it's simply letting pedestrians and vehicles know, hey, go this way to get down to Daybreak Church or to get to the township Dog Park. So we viewed it as falling within the definition of a directional sign, but it also could be viewed as an off-premises sign. And so we wanted to make sure the sign plan was complete, included all the signage. But, you know, there is that question about the directional sign. I think if the board were to find that it is a directional sign, then it could be approved as proposed as part of the master sign plan application. If the board were to find that it is an off-premises sign, we would not be able to construct that sign as proposed unless we went to the zoning hearing board for relief. But we want it to be part of the master sign plan for completeness and also for purposes of discussion with the board. But it is simply intended to provide direction to both vehicles and pedestrians for where they need to go to get to the church and to the Dog Park. So that's the end of my aside.
Yep, and Pastor Rick Jacobs is here from Daybreak. Would, would that be a good time?
Let's, we'll wait till the end and then.
If I could maybe make just one more clarification. Several years ago, when we were working on this, on this project, Daybreak Church and Lindlow Properties entered into a, a cross-easement agreement so that members of Daybreak Church can walk on the walking trails on our property and vice versa. So our customers and tenants can walk on the, on the trails on the church property. So again, it's, the sign is really to facilitate people's awareness of, of the sign and where the walking trails are.
I wanted to get clarification on who can use the Dog Park. I thought the dogs had to be registered, and it was only for Upper Allen residents.
No, they have to be registered, but anyone can register if they meet the requirements.
Anybody what?
Anyone can register if they meet the requirements, there's.
So like the general public driving in there and to Chick-fil-A or something off of 15 may see that and think they can take their dog to the Dog Park. I'm not sure that would be permitted per, per the rules. Or maybe we need the free dog area or something, where they can use the dog, but I just thought that may be an issue.
You don't know the answer to that question?
Well, yeah. Commissioner Cochran's correct in that you have to have the dog registered with proper vaccination papers, et cetera, so that it's a safe dog. And I understand your concern, because if it's someone who is a visitor, a casual visitor as opposed to being part of the community, they may not, they see Dog Park and they might run down. So Mike, you have a comment, thank you.
Any, anyone trying to go to the Dog Park, they would need to have a fob that we would give them, so they couldn't get in. And anyone with a fob isn't supposed to let another dog in that isn't part of the program.
Okay.
And I'm not anti-dog or anything. Maybe we, the park and rec should review that, you know, to have a general dog area. I mean, I can see people coming off the interstate who would want to, yeah, have their, take advantage of that.
It's about a point, you, you may want to have additional verbiage on that sign to say, for registered dogs only or something, yeah, I don't know.
And that's, that's a good discussion. You know, one thing we were thinking was, you know, if, if we can't do what we're proposing, maybe it's, we still want to be able to provide direction to people, and maybe it would just be church with an arrow and Dog Park with an arrow, but then you would lose that Upper Allen Township that people might recognize, okay, this isn't just a place where we show up and do what we want, it's a township Dog Park, and maybe we better check the regulations, but, but all good discussion points. Okay, let's talk about Sign E. I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's Exhibit A12. Does that exhibit depict? Uh, I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A-twelve, um, does that exhibit depict sign E?
Yes, it does.
And that's the proposed wall sign on the retaining wall in, uh, front of Chick-fil-A?
Yes, it is.
And I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A-thirteen, which is the revised, uh, sign E exhibit. Again, just explain for us the revisions that were made from the exhibit submitted with the application to what's reflected on exhibit A-thirteen.
Sure, on exhibit A-thirteen, the only thing we added was the third page, which has the sign illumination calculations.
Okay, and if you could describe for us the proposed retaining wall sign?
Uh, sure, the retaining wall sign will be, uh, backlit letters that will be mounted on to the, the upper retaining wall that, that's, uh, behind Chick-fil-A. Uh, the letters will be mounted roughly five or six feet above, above the grass in, in that area. And, uh, I think I mentioned they'll be backlit, so.
And is the proposed retaining wall sign permitted without approval of, uh, the master sign plan?
No, it's not.
And what is the proposed height of the retaining wall sign in terms of height being the, the height of the, the letters?
Uh, the letters will be about two and a half feet high.
And the total area of the retaining wall sign is approximately two hundred and forty square feet?
Yes.
Okay. Turn our attention to the mixed use buildings. Showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A-fourteen, if I can. Does that, uh, exhibit, uh, depict the, uh, proposed wall signs that would be located on the first floor of the commercial buildings for the, the retail tenants?
Yes, it is.
And I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A-fifteen. Um, if you could describe for us the revisions that were made to exhibit, uh, what, to sign F as reflected on exhibit A-six, A-fifteen?
Yep, there actually are, are no changes, I think this one just was submitted because all the other ones were being submitted. Uh, the only change that I could see was on A-fifteen, the, uh, the drawing revision dates near the bottom were, were added.
Okay, and if you could, oh.
No, no.
Oh, okay, uh, describe for us the proposed mixed use signs as depicted on, uh, exhibit A-fifteen.
Sure, uh, these signs, um, will be based in significant part on what each tenant wants to do. Um, we, on these, we're focused mostly on the size, so that we can allow each tenant basically forty square feet, uh, to kind of create a sign of, of their own that fits their style and, and the, and the decor of their business. Um, we, we do want to have, you know, obviously we want to have some control over the tenant signs. Um, and we were actually discussing with, with Ray, some ideas of, of maybe we would, we would mount a backer on the wall, uh, that would be that size and kind of allow the tenant to mount their sign onto that backer. Um, but the signs generally we're envisioning would be, would be internally lit. Uh, again, depending on decor, we, we may mount the, uh, the antique downlights on the walls, you know, to light the signs. So, uh, I think that's it.
And I'm showing you, uh, what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A-sixteen. Um, does that depict the proposed locations of, uh, the mixed use tenant, or mixed use building tenant signs on those, uh, building elevations?
Yes, it does.
So there would be one tenant sign for each tenant occupying the first floor of the building?
Yep.
And that's a maximum of six signs for each mixed use building?
Correct.
And are the mixed use building signs permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, they are.
Is the proposed height that each of the mixed use building signs will be mounted on the facade of the building permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes.
You mentioned that the proposed area of each of the mixed use building signs would be forty square feet. Is that area permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, it is.
Turn our attention to the.
Before we leave those signs, if you don't mind, are you going to allow each individual tenant to pick and choose whether they want the goosenecks? Or I would think you'd want a consistent look to the building. I'm trying to figure out which one of these two you're going to use, or one on one building and one on the other, or you're just let them pick whatever they want?
Yeah, or we may put the goosenecks on just for decor, even if maybe, you know, the tur, the, the sign is internally lit.
Okay, so the goosenecks would not be providing illumination, or would they? I, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, it may depend on, on the sign itself, so. And I, I apologize for the ambiguity because, you know, some of these things were, we're kind of still in the developmental stages.
Right. Okay, well, I, yeah, I, I would have thought you had some kind of standard you wanted to adhere to, um, one or the other. But you're going to, you, this could, so you could have downlit goosenecks lighting two of the four fr, two of the six fronts, and the other four would be rear illuminated signs? I, I just find that hard to picture aesthetically, it just doesn't seem to, it, what you're trying to do everywhere else.
Well, I would think to at least have the goosenecks on each sign, you know, from a visual standpoint, maybe at nighttime it would be inconsistent, but I like the idea of having them on, but.
Yep.
Uh, I, would you be willing to have as a condition, um, no more than six signs on each mixed use building, wall signs?
Yes, I, and I think functionally, with each building having ten thousand square foot of retail, the relationship between the depth and width of the building, um, I think practically a tenant could really be no smaller than about fifteen or, or sixteen hundred square feet. So, yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to, I mean, in addition to this, concerns about illumination, I would probably not prefer to see ten signs across the front of that facade.
Okay.
Let's talk about the Chick-fil-A sign, so we have two existing Chick-fil-A signs, and then we have proposed Chick-fil-A signs. So I've shown you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A-seventeen. Um, let's talk about the existing Chick-fil-A wall sign. Uh, that's sign B, uh, on exhibit A-seventeen, is that correct?
That is correct, it's the sign directly over their, their front door.
And does the, uh, second page of exhibit A-seventeen, uh, depict, uh, that, uh, elevation with that existing sign?
Yes.
The, um, existing wall sign B, is that permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, a, and it's already existing.
And the, uh, existing area of that wall sign is eighty-four point oh five square feet?
That is true.
And that area is permitted, uh, without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes.
Let's turn our attention to the existing Chick-fil-A pylon sign. Um, and that would be sign A on exhibit A-seventeen, correct?
That's correct.
And what is the, um, existing height of the pylon sign?
That sign is twenty, twenty feet high.
And the existing pylon sign is permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, it is.
And that, uh, existing height of the pylon sign is also permitted without approval of a master sign plan?
Correct.
What is the existing area of the pylon sign?
It is sixty-four square feet.
Uh.
Wait a minute.
Double check.
Wait, 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 yeah. I'm sorry, yeah, four, forty-two and a quarter square feet.
Okay, um, and the existing area of the pylon sign is also permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
Yes, it is.
Let's talk now about the proposed Chick-fil-A signage, so we're still on exhibit A-seventeen. Let's look at the wall signs first, uh, first would be proposed wall sign C?
Correct.
Is that proposed wall sign C the same sign as sign B, the existing sign?
Correct.
And where would that wall sign C be located on the Chick-fil-A building?
Uh, that would be on the east, eastern side of the building.
And does that sign require approval of the master sign plan in order for the sign to be attached to the building?
Yes, it does.
And what is the proposed area of wall sign C?
Uh, that sign is eighty-four square feet.
So it's the same size as sign B, correct, the existing wall sign?
Correct.
Let's talk about proposed wall sign D, if you could identify where wall sign D will be located on the Chick-fil-A building.
Sure, wall sign D will be on the side facing towards Gettysburg Pike, be on the west side of the building.
And is that wall sign permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
No.
Is the, what is the proposed area of wall sign D?
Thirty-six square feet.
Let's talk about, uh, proposed wall sign E. Uh, is that, uh, sign the same sign as sign B, the existing Chick-fil-A sign?
Yes, it is.
And where will sign E be located on the building?
That will be on the north side facing towards Market Street.
Is sign E permitted without approval of the master sign plan?
No.
And the area of wall sign E is the same as the area of wall sign B and C or eighty-four?
Yep.
Point oh five square.
Yes.
Can I ask a question, though, when you're, when you're saying it's not permitted by the master sign plan, the reason is because you have an, an existing sign, it's not that the size is too big. It's because there's, if it was the only sign on the building, it would be permitted.
Correct, if each of those proposed signs was the only Chick-fil-A sign on the building, it would be permitted. But because there is an existing Chick-fil-A sign, we're asking for additional wall signs on the building.
And is the contrary true also, in some of these cases, you say, yes, it's a permitted sign, but it would be permitted by itself? But since there's other signs there, some of the earlier signs, they were all permitted regardless of other signs being there?
Yeah, anytime we say a sign is permitted, it means it would be permitted.
Regardless, with the other sides.
Correct.
Being there, okay, thank you. And, uh, just a question on these, and, and I, I know part of it is the architecture of the building, but there are two different heights. Um, three of them are pushed up close to the roof and one of them's down a little lower because the roof is lower on the side. Why couldn't they all be the same lower height, why do they need to be pushed up to the top on three sides and down lower on? Just my.
My, my thought would be.
You, you can't go higher than the fourteen on that one because the side profile of the building, you run into the roof. But then why wouldn't the, why couldn't the other ones be at the same height and not be pushed to the top and more?
Yeah, I would assume the, 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 the chicken logo that faces towards Gettysburg Pike is higher because you have the, uh, the drive-through roof. And Gettysburg Pike is significantly lower, so you kind of need it higher to be able to look up and see it.
Well, it, I mean, from the schematic, it's significantly above the drive-through roof. Uh, if you look at your second page, um, it's well above, and it could be at the fourteen foot level by my, by, by my eye, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering why we have to have so many so high. You've got two big pylon signs already, they're going to break through the, the nighttime sky. So why do the other three have to be pushed that high when the fourth one can be lower? Is that some kind of corporate requirement or something, I, I just?
Because, I mean, just kind of reiterating what, what Bill just said, on the, on the Gettysburg side, um, it, it may appear on the drawing that the drive-through roof is, is significantly below, but that drive-through roof is probably, you know, it's three lanes, it's probably forty or forty-five feet wide. So you've got to be pretty far back in order to look up over top of that sign.
But the topography is such that you, you will be pretty far back, you can't get closer to it. Um, you've got the trupality between you and, and Chick-fil-A, um, on Gettysburg, you're back sixty feet, eighty feet, something like that to view it?
Yeah.
And, and I'm more interested in the view as you're crusty market and you're looking over and you're seeing it. Um, yeah.
Yeah, and you have that beautiful clock tower blocking the view, you know, you've got to have it high enough.
I like the clock tower.
Just thought I'd throw that in there.
Okay.
Uh, let's talk about the.
I have a question on, on, on C. Is, does the, the drive-through canopy, is that, is that going to get in the way of C even being visible by, by anything? I mean, is it just, I just don't want it to be a wasted sign that we grant.
Looking at these drawings, Rick, I, I can't tell.
It, it, it appears that there's some kind of overhang over top of that last window to the right, if that's the canopy, I don't know.
Yeah, it's towards Route fifteen.
Yeah.
I mean, I see the need for E because when you come off going southbound on Route fifteen, that's, that's going to be the winner, that's going to take me where I need to get to Chick-fil-A, right now there is nothing to tell me how to get there. But C, I, I just don't, you know, I don't know who's going to see that one, I just just don't want to waste your area if it can't be.
They have a, have a pylon sign, hey.
So I, I, I think one I, one, one idea, Rick, might be that if people are on Route fifteen and they're coming from Dillsburg, coming north, they'll be at an angle where they should be able to see sign C?
Now, you also have, you don't show it on this diagram, but you also have your large sign that we just talked about, that has the three tenants on, and they'll be on that, I mean, they'll see that coming north on fifteen before they'd see this, I would think.
Perhaps, yeah.
Um, let's talk about the proposed changeable message board that would be added to the Chick-fil-A pylon. If you could just describe for us what is proposed, uh, for that changeable message board sign?
Sure, so it will be a, it will be a seventeen square foot sign, uh, that will have, uh, I believe, six inch letters that will be capable of, of being changed. Uh, it will not, it will not be digital, you'll have to physically change the letters.
And the, um, is the addition of the proposed changeable message board to the existing Chick-fil-A pylon sign permitted without approval of the master plan?
It is.
And the proposed height on the pylon sign obviously is lower than the, the top of the sign?
Correct.
And the area you, you mentioned is seventeen square feet?
Yep, so if you add the existing sign, which is forty-two and a quarter, and you add on the seventeen square feet of the changeable board, the total is fifty-nine.
And that would still be under the maximum permitted area of sixty square feet, correct?
Correct.
Let's turn our attention to the.
Again, yeah, on, on that one, I have, my, my concern is that eight feet is probably, it's a good height if, if the cars are that elevation, but I mean, the vehicles are sitting well below the bottom of that sign. So are they, are, are vehicles driving by going to be able to see up to where that display is? It would be a waste.
I would say, yeah, I mean, I think on Market Street, you're, you're probably two hundred feet back, so should be able to see it.
This is going to be a sign with letters that somehow adhere to the sign and then you go out with a pole and change them every so often. Why would you do that rather than have a digital sign that's clearer and more readable and less work?
I, I don't know that answer.
I think the gentleman said he didn't have an answer either.
Okay.
She doesn't know who that gentleman is.
He, he's going to introduce himself and make some comments at the end, it's Bill Lindorfer with Chick-fil-A. And let's turn our attention to the proposed Chipotle signs. I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit, um, A-eighteen. Uh, are those, does that exhibit depict the proposed wall signs that are proposed for the Chipotle building?
It does.
And let's talk about the, the three different size, uh, three different signs. Let's start on the west side of the Chipotle building, if you could describe the sign that's proposed for the west side of the building?
Sure, that sign will be that sign will be facing towards, uh, Gettysburg Pike, and that sign will be, um, about thirty-two, I'm sorry, thirty-five point two square feet.
And is that? And is that proposed sign permitted without approval of the, the master sign plan?
No.
And the area of the proposed wall sign, uh, would that be permitted but for the fact that it's, uh, an extra wall sign?
Yes.
Let's talk about the proposed wall sign that will be located on the north side of the Chipotle building. If you could describe that sign for us?
Sure. That'll be internally illuminated. Uh, it will be, uh, about twenty-nine square feet. And as you just said, it'll be facing towards Market Street.
And then same thing that, that sign and the sign size, uh, would be permitted but for the fact that it's, uh, an additional wall sign beyond what's already permitted?
That's correct.
And then on the south elevation, is that proposed wall sign the same sign that is proposed on the west side of the Chipotle building?
It is. It'll be internally illuminated. It will be about twenty-nine square feet and it will face, uh, internal towards Lindlow Boulevard.
And does, uh, exhibit A eighteen, uh, depict elevation renderings, uh, of the Chipotle building with those signs attached?
It does.
So are, are you saying that our ordinance would not allow any building sign because there's one sign on Chipotle now, I mean, on Chick-fil-A? No signs are allowed to go on Chipotle?
Correct. Well, with one caveat, um, we are allowed an additional sign, but that can be either a wall sign or a freestanding sign. So we have used that one additional for the, the proposed pylon sign, sign C. Uh, but yes, generally speaking, you're only getting one wall sign.
Do you have a total, like, square footage of the Chipotle wall signage on the building?
Of, of them all, all added together?
Yeah.
Uh, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, fifty-eight. Ninety-three point two.
I didn't, well, I don't look back, but what Chick, Chick-fil-A is requesting is much higher, I believe, if they add them all up. Close to.
Yeah, I, I think it's an eighty-eight.
Probably more to do with the style of the, of the logo.
Mention, right?
Yeah.
Showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A nineteen, uh, is that, uh, the, uh, sign illumination details for the, the master sign plan application?
Yes, it is.
And then we already took a look at this on the screen, uh, but I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A twenty. Is this an exhibit that depicts images of the, the main entrance sign, the monument sign and the pylon sign with the Chick-fil-A and Chipotle signs added to the, uh, proposed signs?
Yes, it does.
We've covered all the signs, so now just gonna run through some, uh, questions on standards. Um, how are we, this will be another five minutes? And then Mr. Lindorfer, Mr. Jacobs just wanted to make a couple of quick comments.
Can we, uh, can we including fif- next fifteen minutes?
I think so, yeah.
Because we have a stormwater. Are you okay if we start? Okay, continue.
And I'll ask you some, some general questions. Mr. Gates, um, if the application is approved, does the applicant agree to, uh, comply with the applicable permitting requirements in Article eighteen of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
If the application is approved, does the applicant agree to comply with the amendment process for a master sign plan that has been approved?
Yes.
As required by the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
In your opinion, if the application is approved, uh, will the proposed signage help establish a cohesive and aesthetically pleasing overall design of signage within the, uh, development complex?
Y- yes, definitely.
And will it also promote general consistency among the existing and proposed signs within the development?
Yes.
In your opinion, um, will the proposed, uh, master sign plan, um, if approved, uh, contribute to the quality of the design of the development of the complex equally or better that would result under the general sign standards of Article eighteen?
Yes.
In your opinion, do the signs help create a uniform sign package for the development complex related to materials, lighting, design, color, height, style, et cetera?
Yes.
In your opinion, are the proposed signs compatible with the style or character of the improvements in the surrounding area?
Yes.
In your opinion, if the application is approved, will the proposed signs result in any danger to the public health and safety?
No.
In your opinion, will the proposed signs adversely impact the budding properties or future inhabitants of the site or property?
No.
The, um, application, in your opinion, does it comply with all applicable general standards for all conditional use applications as required by the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Uh, those are all the questions I have for, uh, Mr. Gates. Um, as I mentioned, uh, Mr. Lindorfer with Chick-fil-A is here. He'd just like to provide us a few comments to the board and then Rick Jacobs with Daybreak Church would, uh, like to make a few comments to the board and then I'll wrap up and, uh, we'll be done. Mr. Lindorfer?
Yes, sir. Bill Lindorfer, L-I-N-D-O-R-F-E-R. Good evening. Hi, my name is Bill Lindorfer. I'm the operator of the Chick-fil-A at Shepherdstown Crossing located at two nineteen Gettysburg Pike in Upper Allen Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I apologize if you are getting any smells of chicken, then that might be me. I feel very grateful and very blessed to be able to serve our local community. Most of the time when Chick-fil-A selects an operator for a restaurant, it is usually someone who relocates from somewhere else around the country and they don't know the local area and don't have roots in the local community. My wife and I have lived in the area for over thirty years. We love living here. We raised our kids here and we want the very best for our community. We, we passed on several other Chick-fil-A opportunities that would have taken us out of the area because we really do love this place. And for the last year and a half, we have poured our heart and our soul into this business and our employees and into our community. Over the last year and a half, we have employed over two hundred people at one time or another. We have helped many local schools, churches and organizations with their fundraising and we, we also help with food and other donations every single week. In fact, last year alone, we donated almost sixty thousand dollars in food to local food banks through Good Hope Ministries. In addition, last year, we had seven student employees who received Chick-fil-A Remarkable Future scholarships. And this year, we started, this is an optional program, um, that I decided to do that we started offering our employees free online college tuition. Please accept my apologies. I'm not trying to make this an informa- infomercial for Chick-fil-A. I simply want you to know some of the things that we are doing for our local community now because I believe we can do so much more, but we need a little help. Most Chick-fil-A's have major retail establishments around them and, um, look at Lower Allen, um, look at the Carlisle Pike, all the retail that's around those locations. Those, those are representative of normal Chick-fil-A locations. We're a little different. Um, we're up on this hill. Um, there, there will be some retail coming, some more retail, but not major establishments. So we have to rely on bringing people to us. They're not out shopping and wanna stop in Chick-fil-A. You see, we have this beautiful brown building that sits up on the hill, but people who drive past it on Route fifteen have no idea who we are. Many, many times, out of town customers have stopped me in the restaurant to tell me that we need to get signs on our building that face the highway. Almost every one of them tell me that they could not tell what our building was from Route fifteen. One couple told me that it was just dumb luck that they found us. They got off the Route, got off of the Route fifteen exit to look for a restroom and they stumbled upon us. They told me that they drive Route fifteen several times a month and all that time they had no idea we were there. If someone from out of town is using Google Maps, Apple Maps or Waze, they can certainly find us, but not everyone today uses GPS. A lot of the older generation like me and older still rely on highway signs and business signs to navigate. If these drivers do not see our small pen dot signs on Route fifteen, then they have the potential to drive right by and give their business somewhere else outside of Upper Allen Township. We spend an enormous amount of time and money on recruiting and interviewing. Several times a week, we have applicants who are either late or are no-shows for interviews because they couldn't find our store. My point is, this isn't just a feeling. This is a real problem for us. Whenever we have visitors from Chick-fil-A corporate, they immediately notice that we do not have signs on three sides of the building that they're accustomed to and they ask why. They tell us how beautiful our location is and our areas, but that we were missing out on a lot of sales because of this. We talked about some of the locations of the signs on the building. Quite honestly, the two most important signs to me are the two facing the highway. Um, so that the, the store can be clearly seen what it is traveling both southbound and northbound. The challenge with having, I'm sorry. I'll wrap up here. So in closing, not having the signs that are visible from both directions from Route fifteen is a major missing component of our marketing efforts. If we are able to add the signage, I believe we would see an immediate boost in sales. It would also help build brand awareness and increase repeat visitors from out of town who are traveling through. An increase in sales would allow us to hire more township residents and would also increase tax revenue for the township. And most importantly, an increase in sales will give us the means to do so much more for our local community. Thank you.
Ask you a question. You may not wanna give me the answer or not, but how are your sales compared to other, other places? Do, do you have those numbers or, you know, in the first year?
Um, it, it's difficult to compare apples to apples because we're still new. Um, but based on what we were projected to do, um, we are significantly sure of what we were projected to do. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Jacobs, Daybreak Church. Wanted to just say thank you to everyone. I feel like, uh, we've, over the last, uh, five to eight years, been in partnership, well, ten years, partnership with the township. Uh, with Scott, who is no longer here and just taking your name and says, we'll have to get together at some point. But, uh, uh, also with Helixus now and working on some things with walking paths, uh, that have, when you're a nonprofit, things move at a stale, uh, snail's pace when it comes to development often. But so grateful for the partnership with Lindlow and, uh, with Bill, with Chick-fil-A. And I feel like, um, when we dedicated the, the property and the Chick-fil-A, uh, the building, we said that, um, we're all in the people business and we're all in making an investment in this community. We just all have different ways that we do that, thus as a church and, uh, different ways we serve the community. So, uh, grateful for all of these partnerships and for us, um, specifically, we have seen, um, as Chick-fil-A has come in, uh, in the dog park, there have been, there's lots of foot traffic. Um, and now that the road is there, there's also a lot of people wander their way down, uh, coming both directions from the dog park up and the opposite direction as well. Uh, we are looking forward to in the next couple of years, getting those walking paths in that we've been planning for a long time that will connect us with, uh, all the Lindlow's property, but also, uh, the original plan connects us to the neighborhood. The townhouse is on the north, on the south side, then, uh, you know, gives us access to all those communities for people to use the church property and access, because Gettysburg Pike is not a very safe, walking, accessible road. So we're looking forward to that. The directional signs, I think, would just be really helpful, um, when those, if you notice, when the two apartment buildings go in. Right now, when you pull up towards Chick-fil-A off Gettysburg Pike, you can see the roof of the church down to the right. But when those buildings go in, uh, that's gonna cut off that line of visibility. So I think it'd be great if those, uh, are present, just to let people know. We have about half of our traffic. It was, I'd say it's a little more than sixty, forty, sixty percent still use our primary driveway. Uh, but I would say we're at about, probably heading towards fifty, fifty of people who will use, uh, the auxiliary, uh, form of egress, uh, with that entrance being there. So, uh, we just appreciate the, the connection to all of it. And it has been wonderful for us, especially in the winter time on Sundays. And we don't even have any conflict with Bill because they're closed on Sundays, but we have about five hundred, uh, cars between eight AM and one PM that come in and out of our lot. And now we have the preschool on the weekday mornings that we partner with and that's a hundred cars or so. And then we have evening ministries at the church. So there's just a lot of traffic in and out and the second form of egress has been a great help to us. So any signage that we could have along the way would be a gift to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that would conclude our presentation. I would just request that exhibits A one through A twenty be admitted into and made a part of the record. And then I won't belabor it. I would just request that the, uh, you consider approving the master sign plan application is, uh, submitted and, and thank you very much for your time.
Yeah. I'm going to look to the solicitor for advice in that we have other, uh, scheduled meetings. Would you recommend that we continue the hearing and wrap it up at a, a further date? Or is it the will of the board that we push Stormwater back another fifteen minutes and?
Turn back?
Okay.
We'll go later.
Okay.
Just can't go right.
That's subject to the will of the commissioners. Are they, yeah.
Okay, well, the Stormwater chair said we can push right. Rick?
I would rather get it done if it's, we don't have, if it, I have just one question.
Okay. Well, then if it's okay with everybody listening, thank you. Go ahead, Rick.
I have a question. Can the sign manufacturer come up, please? I'd, I just thought, I'm not, I'm not a sign guy. But, you know, this, this exhibit to me, it, it's, it's overwhelming, you know, right from the start. Is there a possible way to build it where if I only have these two tenants in Chick-fil-A and Chipotle, can, is, can this be open and this look like they're just steel? You know, and as each one comes in, you add down. So it's, I mean, because this could be five years and it just look, it'll, it looks.
Overrun by the whiteness of it?
Yeah.
So we could put colored faces in there, dark faces, um, so.
I mean, I still would prefer if it, saying, if it goes no further, I would rather have this open than you actually, then you meet the ordinance. Uh, because you could see through this area.
Well, you're.
I mean, is it.
That's actually fabricated sign cabinet. So if I would take those faces out of there, you're gonna see structure and you're gonna see LED lights and you're gonna see, and it's gonna be exposed to the weather. If, if, I understand what your question is. Because that is a multi-tenant sign cabinet. It's for your tenants to move in and it's built to, you know, for tenants to go in there and the, as the faces can be replaced and move in and out. I'm saying if you're, if it's the whiteness you don't like, the overwhelming of the whiteness, we can put darker or beige-colored face in there just to, to tone it down. Now, I will say, looking at a picture is different than when you actually see it out in the environment. I mean, you get, you get the whole area, you got the, you know, the wall, you know, the, the area and everything else. It's a, the.
You could just say, no, that's crazy. That's what you just said. I would rather have that than witness.
All right. Okay. Other commissioners?
What we, what are we trying to do here? That's, I, I feel like we need more time, but.
Yeah, you don't.
Well, we don't have to take action, but I'm just.
And then we have it on our agenda to possibly take action, but that wouldn't necessarily be fair to discuss it ourselves with, without clients here.
This is just a hearing, as I understand, this is just a hearing where the applicant and other interested parties can give us input and we as a board and the public have an opportunity to ask questions so that we fully understand the application. And then after that, we can discuss the application and take action.
During our regular board meeting.
Or at a, then maybe. Or at a successive board meeting.
Schedule one.
Correct.
Schedule another hearing.
It would not have to be tonight.
That, okay, that's what I thought too.
So I, I guess I'll just make a statement if, if you're, I'm, I'm pretty much in favor of the, the, uh, the plan. Uh, I've already said that I'd rather see the Chick-fil-A all at a common height around the building and not pushed up as high as you can get into the night sky. You're gonna have a huge pylon on the highway. Um, and you have, already have a pylon down on Market Street. And then we come to the one piece that I don't like and that's the monument. You're, you're, you're asking for a monument that's almost twice the size of what's allowed by, by right, right now. And I think the base is big enough that you could easily knock a couple of feet off that base and bring that down from the nineteen feet down to maybe seventeen feet. Just, it, it seems overwhelming to me at nineteen feet. Just, it seems overwhelming to me at nineteen feet and with, I think it's almost five foot of base. So you don't get to the first sign until, you know, you're almost chest-high to somebody walking up there. And I don't think it needs to be that high. So that would be the thing that would spoil it for me, but that's just one opinion.
And that's something I believe, check me Steve, but if we were to take action or when we take action, we can put conditions on the plan. So we could include something like that.
That's what I'm hoping.
I had a slower reaction. I know we got to wrap it up. Just the mass of the monument signs kind of really get in your face. I noticed you moved the one back five feet. I mean, if that was a pole sign that, in the black iron or something that mimicked the clock, you know, there'd be more visibility for traffic and perhaps a better aesthetic overall if you adopted that standard versus mixing pole signs and monument signs. But just my two cents or what kind of put me off, just knowing how massive monument signs can be.
Sure.
Okay, so I hear exactly what both of you are saying. I would have no problem shrinking the brick base, bringing it down to a more, you know, maybe halving it. And that would kind of lower the whole sign.
That would be great.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
From my perspective, I like the brick base and so I really think that as you've looked at this, you've tried to make signage that's aesthetically pleasing and consistent with the quality of the development. So I like that. Overall, I like the approach. I think it's wise to be able to look at the signage in totality for that given area as opposed to take it case by case by case when each business comes. So I still like the fact that we have the opportunity for a master sign ordinance and I hear my colleagues and I think we could make some adjustments, but overall, I'm a big believer in if you want to have a vibrant commercial district and anything or just a church or a civic building, unless you have signage that is legible and people can read, it does no one any good, the customer or the proprietor. Because to me, it becomes a public safety issue if you're driving down a highway and have to slow down, squint to read a sign, you aren't paying attention to the road. So I'm cognizant of sign pollution, but on the other hand, I really think we owe it to our traveling public to be able to read the signs. So I applaud the general approach. I think you did a lot of work and it's good.
Thank you, thank you. At Lindlow Properties, we're super excited about the project to have Chipotle finally kind of under our belt and ready to start building. We hope to have the architectural drawings for mixed-use building number one done so we can maybe break ground in March of next year. That'll take about ten, eleven, twelve months to build, but you know, we have tenants who, you know, retail tenants who want to be there. So it's, you know, it feels like the momentum is definitely building. Thank you.
Mike, is there anything from a staff perspective that you wanted to add or say tonight?
Well, first of all, the applicant did provide, I'd say, time extension to November seventh to make a decision. So you would be able to hear this at the November fifth meeting. Otherwise, you would have to make a decision tonight. Beyond that, I-
No, no, you've got forty-five days to issue findings of fact and conclusions, so there's time.
I thought you had to make a decision though within the sixty-day timeframe. Is that not true?
No, I think as a conditional use, it's forty-five days.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Finehour.
The date of the hearing.
Yeah, the Municipalities Planning Code says you have sixty days to hold the hearing from the date the application is filed. And then from the date of the last hearing, you have forty-five days to issue the written decision.
Maybe Mike's going by date of application.
Okay, that would be forty-five days from today. Okay, so we do have time. I think the question is, do we continue the hearing or do we close the hearing knowing that we're going to discuss and have interaction, have staff input, et cetera, before? But does anyone have advice on that?
I'd prefer to close the hearing and then if we have to, we can still talk about it on our open agenda.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my purpose, but I want to give, are you okay with closing? You okay, Mike?
I'm good at that.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wished to speak to this issuer to the sign ordinance? I think we covered everybody that had signed up, but I want to give ample opportunity. Okay, you were standing up. Did you have a concluding comment?
Oh, no, I was just going to agree with what was stated on behalf of the applicant. And minor housekeeping, this is one set of exhibits that we were using for the testimony. I don't know if someone in particular holds on to these mics. Should I give them to you? You'll take them, okay.
Oh, okay, that's great. And I think we all have them, so thank you. But thank you for providing them tonight because a lot of signs, a lot of information, but they were well-marked and articulated and you kept us on track, Mr. Gates. So I knew, I could even follow it. Thank you. Given that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Phil made the motion, Jim second, discussion. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Close, no, motion carried. Thank you for your-